Okay. Before Ms. Shaw speaks, we have on the consent items. Item two. I'll give you one too. Item two on consent. Item three on consent. Item five. Mr. Smith, do you want to talk on that or put it on consent?
Oh, yeah, we'll talk about it.
We'll talk about it. So, we're gonna call five later. We will put it on consent. Number six, we have on consent. Mr. Smith, do I have your concurrence on two, three, and six?
You got it.
Okay, so moved. Two, three, and six. Okay? Roz, seven, eight, nine, and 10, what are these, 11 and 12?
Councilmember. Number eight, we're asking to be called special. I just got that information.
So, eight will be special. What about seven?
Consent.
Okay. So, now we're looking still on consent, Mr. Smith. Seven. Nine. Ten. Eleven. And 12. So moved. So, left for us to deal with will be item one. Item five. And item eight, am I right? Plus 13.
13.
Okay.
Let's go back to item one then?
Very good. So be it. Hello. So, a big question for you is, why do you want to be reappointed?
Is that, why would anybody in their right mind want to be reappointed? Or why do?
Well, I just find myself
Having so much
A fortunate person to be a part of the Board of Public Works for many years and just have the opportunity to advocate in the interest of the public and to work with just extraordinary staff and to try to move forward ideas and really to also be a part of the process that just really tries to help people understand the importance of infrastructure, maintenance, and development.
Ah, so when you reflect on, how long have you been on the commission?
How long? 12 years.
What do you consider the most significant issues that you resolved in that is my first question, and the second one is, what do you want to do next with the commission?
I'm gonna pass out my bio.
Yeah, it's a great bio, I saw it.
Oh, you saw it already, okay. What is the most important thing I've done? I want to say that what I've tried to do, whether it's been inside City Hall or outside City Hall, is I've tried to educate and educate the public and then act in the interest of the staff. That is, I think, the most important thing that I've done. Now, I've been involved in a myriad of things, all the way from, you know, being the commissioner that led the effort to have the first project labor agreement. I was involved in the ESIS project. I was involved in the sewer settlement in terms of the spills we've had. I've just recently worked with four, five elected officials, the mayor and four council members, 15 departments, over 100 staff to craft and to move forward the South LA initiatives, which is a sort of a broad regional view of how to improve conditions in South LA. I was the president of the board for four years, and I tried to be the best president I could, and during that time, there were a number of trying circumstances, and I think, you know, we did well. So, I'm just proud of my accomplishments, and I've just been a lucky person to be a part of the city family. You know, actually, I've worked for the city now for nearly 20 years as a former council deputy for Ruth Galaner, and then now as the Public Works Commissioner.
Yeah, I'm just curious how you made it through Reardon and Hawn and Villa Regusa, you know, it's a big deal to go through three mayors.
The people have lifted me up and moved me forward.
Yeah.
I've tried to do the best that I could do.
Right.
But I've just, you know, when I say that, it might sound corny, but that's how I've been able to move forward.
It's obviously worked. I mean, the truth is, you're great. What are the challenges that you want to deal with next?
Well, I want to still continue to move forward with the South LA plan. It's a five-year strategic plan. We're just six months into that, and I'm going to really focus on that. And Greg, I'm not going to give up on coming up with a, being an advocate for a comprehensive, you know, street improvement plan that will move, you know, that will, actually, public works plan, that will trim the trees and, when we have money, I mean, you know, it's a dream, but it can happen. That will look at all various elements of public works and infrastructure and be able to have a plan that will move those elements forward in a timely fashion.
Here are the two big ones, obviously. Touch every street will take 60 years, according to everybody, to do it right. We one point, thought 1.5 billion, now we've heard it's 2.3 billion. It needs to be a bond measure. Any suggestions on how we deal with our streets? Do you have to do a bond?
I think, yes. And I think, a street improvement bond, absolutely, you know, but I think, again, I think if we do it, if we can prove to people that we can do things that have synergy, so we can go in, we'll trim their trees in a certain amount of time, fix their sidewalks, and then resurface their streets, which we can do, having incremental bonds, and then you can see the change automatically. It's almost like, you know, under Reardon, they had TNI, and I'm certain under other circumstances, but you, I'm certain as councilman, if you focused on certain areas and you've seen the improvement. So, I think we have to have a holistic approach, and I think we can sell that to the public. But we, there has to be the will to do that.
Okay. We look forward to your leadership in helping us do that. What always crossed me is just even today, I'm on one of my major streets, and it looks so beautiful, and then it stopped in the middle of it, and I always have constituents everywhere saying, "They did this, they did that, but then they missed my street," or "They did this, and they were supposed to do the alley, they only did a part of it." I spend probably more time with constituents on street and sidewalk issue than everything else.
Absolutely.
They just don't understand, and I have had Bill Robertson, brilliant, fantastic, do dog and pony shows before neighborhood councils, you know, streets are ones, two, three, four, and five.
I saw that on Channel 35, uh-huh.
I mean, he's great, he's just great. And then at least my constituents in those three areas have done it, in West Chester, West LA, and Mar Vista, and now Venice, they know what we're talking about, and they have a better sense of that.
You have to spread that knowledge. You have to help people understand the importance, and I, and you know, public works isn't a sexy subject. So, I think we just have to, but when I go out and speak, I talk about how many elements of infrastructure that you touch daily.
Yeah.
You know, you get up, you turn the light on, you step on the sidewalk, you drive along the street, you go to the street light, that's all the physical infrastructure of the city. People don't understand that. And I think once we enhance their understanding and let them know how much it costs, I think ultimately we'll get there.
Would you do one big bond of, say, 2.3 billion, or would you do a piece every five years?
I'd do a series of bonds.
Series of bonds and show the action.
Absolutely.
That's a very good idea, I like that. Last question for me is sidewalks. We've been talking about 80 years to do the sidewalks, but the notion of point of sale has been discussed, and Mr. Smith and I are still discussing it in the public here, and we really believe in it. What's your take on point of sale for sidewalks?
I'm uncertain. I know that, I know the realtors are against it, that's about all I know. I'm uncertain.
Okay, well, thank you very much for stepping back up and continuing to be a great leader for all of us.
Thank you.
I've enjoyed working with you all those years before and as a member of the commission, and when you were president and I was chair of this committee, we had a very good working relationship. Nice thing that you just said is that you've enjoyed educating the people, and one of the things I don't think many people understand is, you actually teach a class at the university once a year. So, you have an ongoing presence in teaching the upcoming generations the importance of public works and infrastructure and how it all fits into the city we live in, and you've been a very strong advocate. I think one huge mistake we had is when we first discussed taking a bond issue to the people, we were talking about 1.2, 1.5 billion. Your proposal was more than that, I think, and I said, "We just can't afford to do that."
Right.
I think we made a huge mistake, and Bill and I and Mr. Cardenas, who were the ones, the proponents for it, made a huge mistake by not going forward when we had the opportunity. We were asked to sit back and wait for a couple of other bond issues to go on the ballot, and now we've lost the energy I think we needed, and I think we've lost the opportunity because I don't think we can put a $2.3 billion bond on the ballot because our total ability to bond right now is only 3 billion. So, we'd pretty much wipe out the city's credit line. But maybe your suggestion that we do it in a couple parts, as we've kind of talked about doing on Prop O, makes some sense, and I'd love to sit down and have a discussion with you about how we could structure that, take it to the people, sell it as a, first we're going to do this, then we'll come back and do that, if you approve that, then we're going to do that, and we're going to show you what we can do. And that's been a successful formula, Alan Ali, so I look, I think we need to have that discussion. I think it's a good idea.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
And the public sunshine here, which of course, we can't talk to each other, Tom, you know, Greg and I, because it's a three-member committee, but I can just say in the declarative sense, the same moment as he is, I would like to see in incremental steps, and maybe we could do a half a billion, you know, as a start, you know, I'm just thinking out loud, and figure it out, show people how it works, get them excited, do it again and again over a period of time. So, I look forward to your
Why don't we schedule that as a discussion, maybe have a joint committee meeting with the board?
Wonderful.
And talk about what we could do, how we could target, what makes sense.
Yes.
So, I'm going to propose we go forward in sometime in late September.
We're ready.
Work with our staff here of a joint meeting that could discuss that as the subject, how do we get our streets together? Okay?
Wonderful.
Great, great, great. Did I hear a motion to?
A long time ago.
And it's been seconded, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Appreciate it. We were going to do item 13 because there was this big thing, but extraordinary moment has just happened. Councilman Tom Labange has joined us, and great respect and deference to Mr. Labange. We're going to go to item number four. Did you read item number four?
Broken.
Item number four, City Engineer Report Ordinance Relative to the Designation of Public Alley to Public Street Name Establishment for the Alley Southerly of Waverly Drive between Herkimer Street and Auburn Street as Avonale Terrace.
Thank you very much. Edwin Mew is next to me, one of the fine engineers from the Bureau of Engineering. Their department, the Bureau of Engineering, has a report. I ask you to approve that report to change the classification of the alley to a street. There is a street that's similar, but even less space west of here, Auburn Terrace, I believe it is, and this would be a continuation. This would also allow persons to park there. There will be some areas that will be no parking because it's adjacent to a garage, but it's next to a school, and you should see the Department of Transportation comes when there's a play, they come and they write tickets like there's no tomorrow in this alley. This will allow them to be more spirited when they go to the school because the people will be legally parked in the area.
Edwin Mew from Public Works Engineering. Engineering, based on the council motion from councilmember Labange, has prepared a report and a draft ordinance for the approval for the reclassification of this alley into the public street, and if your department would like, I mean, the committee would like to approve that, and you can just send the ordinance forward to the full council for approval.
Are all parties in agreement?
Some of the people who live there adjacent don't want it, but this is a challenge, and you know, as an elected official, sometimes you have to make a tough decision what's right. It's adjacent to a public school. What's there now is some trashcans that are set in the alley that should be set on private property. What's there now? Some cars, including, you know, just sitting halfway into the alley that should be off there either in their garage or parked perpendicular to the curb as opposed to diagonal to the street. So, cooperation will be necessary, but you do this in the interest of the public school.
My understanding is that the Department of Transportation, they will, before they will allow any parking in the street area, they will look at the area very closely, and I also talked to the fire department yesterday myself, and then they, the fire department also would like to take a look of this parking layout before DOT would approve it. So, I think the two major agencies will really look at it very closely before they would finalize the parking layout for this area.
Right, and I think the Department of Transportation will need to go to school to learn how to be a visionary in this sense here, because this is an old, over 100-year-old school, and there's no things. And another thing that I'd like for permission, we're going to take the transportation, is they create PPDs for teachers next to public schools so they could park in the area, but that's another subject that I don't want to be out of line in not talking about, it's not on the agenda. And I don't know if there's anybody here from the Department of Transportation?
They couldn't get a parking place.
Oh, Glenn Agura. Glenn Agura. Glenn Agura, who did a great job for this neighborhood. He created an unsafe situation and made it safe by blocking access off to Waverly. Glenn is a leader in the Department of Transportation.
Thank you, Tom Labange. Labange.
Glenn Agura with the Department of Transportation. We have looked at the alley and the conversion to Avonale Terrace. We have no objection to that. We are going to work with Councilmember Labange's office of how we provide parking adjacent to Ivanhoe School.
Great, great. And you're a favorite too?
Yeah, that's correct. Engineering is going to support that.
And there's no public common cards, there's no one here in the room to take another position on it.
Just a couple of quick questions. Edman, this meets the criteria necessary for designation of the street as far as width and everything goes?
That's correct. In our, in the ordinance, based on what councilmember Labange would like to do, the ordinance itself will specify the maximum width of this street is going to be 20 feet. So, down the road, we won't be asking the neighbors of the school to provide new dedication, so the ordinance will take care of that.
Great, great. And then, it looks like all, I'm not sure if, looking at this map, that the one parcel is, is there one parcel that's divided? It's the second parcel in from Auburn, is that divided into two different parcels? Or is that one parcel?
Well, there's a transmission line on Waverly that is a parcel that covers the, what would be the northern parts of these properties, and some do have a division. It's an odd lot of old LA.
It is. But I just want to make sure people had access. It looks like all but the one may have access.
They'll always have access.
Okay.
So moved.
A question, where were you November 22nd?
What year?
1963.
I was at St. Vincent College in Latrobe, Pennsylvania.
Where were you?
High school. Announcing public and, making public announcements.
You're not that much older than me, man. I was on that schoolyard at Ivanhoe. You're not that much older than me. I was on that schoolyard right there, where you made this nice little street.
Then I hitchhiked to Washington DC and was there to go buy the rotunda. John F. Kennedy in it.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you.
Who was on KPPC this morning, talking about pay to throw, and I don't know about pay to throw, but I will, I will tell you, I will throw anything in your direction to help.
I'm just wondering if you want to stay around for
How much I have to pay for that?
The special feast, Mr. Labange, that's going to be a lot of fun.
That's pretty good.
That's item 13. So, Tom, we're going to charge you for your farmers' markets and all your street projects. Thank you so much. Item 13, folks. He's a breath of fresh air.
Well, it's a breath of air.
Breath of something.
Item 13, continued from June 18th, 2008. Joint Chief Legislative Analyst and CAO report relative to proposed fee subsidy policy for special events and related matters, formally council file numbers 99-0397, 99-1582, and 02-0088.
Before you speak, we do have a public common card, and I would appreciate if Walt Walston, is that, am I saying that right, Walt?
Yes, sir.
Come on up. It says you have some general comments and you're against the proposal. Both boxes were checked, so. Welcome.
Thank you.
Your name for the record.
Walt Walston, and I am an event promoter in the city of Los Angeles, based out of Santa Monica. Have a office and license in the city of Santa Monica. I represent this year, 2008, about 15 different charities within, that are based in, within the city of LA. Hopefully, Councilman Rosendahl, you got the lengthy letter I sent over to you. But to summarize that particular letter, I am not opposed to paying people for the services that they render. I know for a fact that special events are a lot safer because of street services and DOT activities and LAPD, and the tighter restrictions that they have put on special events that are held on the streets, and the closing of the streets, and also the closing of streets in areas that are heavily, heavily impact the community. What I am speaking for today in support of the charities is that these various charities, some are big, some are small, but they all support local Los Angeles charities. One, different ones. One particular one that just happened in May, the Palos Verdes Marathon supported 10 charities within the San Pedro area. Any increase in fees from the city will directly cause those charities to increase their budgets $3,000 up per event. Now, those particular charities are not making that much money on an event. A little background on a run, they normally cost about $25,000 to produce, and if you get 1,000 runners, which you're lucky to do, unless it's the LA Marathon or a triathlon, where one is very well established, then you're lucky to break even on an event. And why does the charity do it then? They do it because, for exposure, and they also do it in hopes to get some support from local businesses, which is tough to get at this time, too.
Okay. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. We have another public common card from Papia. Is that how I say it? Okay, come on up. Smith, thank you, sir, for your comments.
Thank you very much. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Pompeo Smith, and I'm the executive director of Sustainable Economic Enterprise of Los Angeles. It's a nonprofit that, for the last 17 years, have been operating farmers' markets, particularly in low-income areas, and we operate seven markets. Lately, this last summer, we opened one in Watts, and the main purpose is for us to bring community sustainability and health, better health, and we do a number of programs in conjunction with the markets to teach about food and nutrition, and particularly Watts Market also makes sure that we have events that related to health screenings and other programs that all relate to improving the health of that community. And I feel that the fees that are being imposed now on farmers' markets are so burdensome that will not allow us to build better communities. And I think that I would like to see that a study be made of farmers' markets impact, from a social positive impact on the community. It's not just about money, but it's also how we create better communities. And I believe that fees should be paid for work done, and I don't think there is too much that the city does for the setup or for the farmers' markets, and I think that paying a reasonable fee, and a reasonable fee would be like we pay to the county agriculture commissioner to come and inspect the markets. We pay about $1,000 maybe, depending on the size of the market, from $400 to $1,000. That seems a reasonable fee, but to request $21,000 to be paid to the city, it just seems to me not short sighted, not seeing what the markets can do to this city.
Thank you very much for your wonderful comments.
You're welcome.
Steph, tell us what we're doing here and what the report is you got right now.
At your meeting of June the 18th, you asked for staff to report back at this
You might note that Richard Alakon has joined us, three members are here.
Your committee asked for CAO and CLA to report back on the number of special events held and the amount of fees and salary costs waived by council district during 2007-08, so we've provided that for you. And you asked for a response to a list of questions that the chair had related to the joint special events report. In addition, we've incorporated the city attorney's, or much of the city attorney's comments that he had at your June 18th meeting, and so we have a revised list of recommendations.
You want to add to it?
Not at this time, we're just available for some questions.
Okay, I do know that many, many folks would like us to continue this again to another meeting in the committee, but the procedures, once it leaves our committee, it's going to budget?
It's going to go to Personnel Committee first because there are four position authorities that are recommended for the Bureau of Street Services in order to staff the one-stop-permit coordination office.
Then it would go to budget after that?
Yes.
And then whatever comes out of budget would go to the final action of the council?
Yes.
So, we'll have a lot of time to continue to consider this in different formats.
Yes, you will.
Okay. What's the history of this? I'm told it goes back to some council action 2003 that was changing some direction of where the CLA's office. Could you give us a sense of the history of this issue and what brought us to this moment?
Sure. I'd like to ask Ms. Carter. She's been the one in our office that's worked on this the longest. Please.
I'm Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Rosalind Carter, CLA. Back in 2002, a task force was established by the CLA, and it consisted of representatives of some various city departments that took a look at several council motions requesting that we look at special events and how we can streamline the process. From that task force meeting, we developed this report. That was the very first report, and that report has gone to about seven committees, and we have the report that is before you right now, which is, it stems from that initial report, and then still a third report, which is a status report that is before you today also. So, that's basically the history. We combined several motions, took the directives from those motions, and developed the report with the recommendations to streamline the process and improve interagency coordination of special events.
Do we have a breakdown of all 15 council districts of various special events?
Yes, we do.
Is that in the record? Is that in front of us?
Yes.
Yes.
That was provided in the report that was released today.
A city clerk is not in receipt of that said report. The latest we have is from May 16th, 2008, so, clerk's record does not have that yet.
The only thing that's in the report was just a couple of general categories.
There's an attachment A.
Just the citywide event.
Yeah.
But not the specific district event.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't see that.
I apologize. We actually released a report here today that outlined a number, addressed a number of questions, one of them was, what was the actual breakdown by?
Because what we're going to want frankly is that into all of our hands and others within the city family to appreciate it so that we can take a better look at it. From a very parochial standpoint, I want to know how many in my district, how many are farmers' markets, you know, how many are street closures for events in community? Also, in my district, of course, I want to put Venice and its boardwalk and all those issues in another category. I want a breakdown, and I'm sure my colleagues want to break down, of what they get charged or don't get charged, or what's considered their district, or what's considered citywide, besides obviously farmers' markets and street closures for street block parties and things like that. Once we get a full picture, we'll be able to have a more robust discussion on the aspects. I frankly, I'll be real candid with you, I consider farmers' markets an essential part of my commitment to my community. I don't want to force them into any financial relationship, and I feel the same way about block parties as a community sugar, piece of sugar for their activities, and I'm not for this $100,000 idea, it will go nowhere. I'm just being candid with you, and I think we need to have a lot more robust data and breakdown of these data, because when I do something in Venice Beach that's for the city, the region, or so on, that's one thing, or something that happens downtown that is overall something or other, or either my two colleagues' districts, similar events like that. Once we get a picture of what we're talking about and capture the whole issue, I mean, we can have a stronger discussion on where we need to go as a city in these budget times.
I'm sorry, what we submitted to you today did not break it down by council district into the type of event, and so we'll, we'll work on that one, see what we can put together for you.
And at this point, for me personally, I'd like to continue it, but I'd like to turn to the colleagues to see if they want to add to the colleagues to see if they want to add more to it or whatever. Mrs. Smith?
Well, I'll start. I had a couple of questions. I am, I'm ready to, you know, I've been ready for two years to move on this, and I've been begging for this to come forward. So I want to see a policy, I think we need to have a policy, and I don't want to delay it much longer if we can help it. I do want to see the breakdown by district. I think it's important, and particularly as it relates to a couple of districts, not mine, but certainly the Ninth and the Thirteenth, where the Ninth is the host of the convention center, and the Thirteenth is Hollywood. And they have extraordinary demands for those two districts in the way of requests for waivers. And so I'd like to see how we, I don't see in here anything, and I haven't fully read, I got to admit, but I don't see anything here on discussion, how we look at those two districts in particular and their extraordinary requests that come to them.
The way the process, or the plan that was proposed to the council, once the policy was decided, staff was going to come back within 60 days with a list of those events that we've believed to be of a citywide.
Right, okay.
Nature.
Which would fall in those two districts.
Yeah, well, many of them do, yes.
Yeah, many of them do, so that's fine. And I'm concerned that when we began talking about this three years ago, the amount was $10 million, now it's down to $5 million, of which $2.5 million is going to be cut out of the budget, or saved in the budget. So what happened to that other $5 million that we originally talked about three years ago? Why has the amount dropped so much?
Well, we, quite frankly, we've been keeping a much closer tally of every single motion. Perhaps the $10 million that was discussed initially was more of an estimate, but we have been keeping track very closely of every single motion that comes to council.
Okay. One other issue I have had a big concern about, and that is dealing with farmers' markets, I think there are two different kinds of farmers' markets. There are the real farmers' markets, which are really the community-based farmers' market. Then there's the for-profit people that organize farmers' markets and derive income from them. And I don't see why we should be giving the people's money to professional organizers to make their salary. That's, to me, that's a gift of public funds, as the city attorney would define a gift of public funds. So I have a big concern about that, and how we could differentiate between a true farmers' market, which is a local artisans coming together. What you really have on the beach is a real local flavor to it, where the artisans come from the community to sell their wares, versus the professionals that come in, organize, bring in the rides and the food booths that come from Ventura to sell things. That's a professional operation, as far as I'm concerned, and competing with legitimate businesses. Have you, have you really found a way to differentiate that yet? Are we just saying gross farmers' markets get up to 50% in how you've dealt with it in this proposal?
I believe what we've done is we've looked at the organizer, and only those that are nonprofit would be eligible for any kind of subsidy. So that would, right off the bat, cut off the professional organizer. But beyond that, I do know that even with a nonprofit organizer, some of the vendor, or probably many of the vendors in a lot of markets are not nonprofit.
Yeah.
They are there to make a profit.
I have one at Northridge Fashion Center, and it's on their property, so there's no fee waivers or anything, it's not a problem. But I go there, it's a wonderful farmers' market, but it's all professionals. There's no local people in there. It's all professionals, they come in, it's almost like the county fair, they come in with their trucks and their food booths, and, you know, it's a very professional operation. I don't, I don't want to subsidize that on public streets. And so I want, I'd like to see something in it that says that, you know, not more than 50% of the participants do this professionally, that they're really local people. And then, to me, that's a real farmers' market. So if we're going to delay, I want to see clear language on farmers' markets and a definition of what farmers' markets are.
So you're saying not more than 50% of the total number of vendors at a nonprofit, organized farmers' market would be eligible?
Yeah. Otherwise, it becomes a professional operation.
Yes, okay.
I'm not taking any position on that at this point with myself, but I have six farmers' markets in my district, if I'm not mistaken. And I'd love for you to reflect on those six and just tell me what they are, what the costs are, and so on, so I get a better picture of them. Let me have one in Brentwood, one in the Palisades, one in West LA, one in Mar Vista, one in Westchester, one in Venice. There might be another one I don't know about, but I know my Mar Vista one, it's the one down the street from my house, I put together, it's really a community-based operation. So to help me even understand, from a policymaker's standpoint, I really want to have a better appreciation. And I think all my colleagues would like to know the number of farmers' markets they have in their district, what the revenue is, or what the costs are, so that they can get a picture of what they're dealing with. Miss Al.
I had one more question now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's fine, just one last question. And that is, have we looked at opportunities for people who run events to cut the cost of running the events? I know other cities, for instance, when it comes to barricades, the city of LA provides barricades, we'll pick them up sometime, we'll go out and help them. It's a cost to us. Some cities say, we're providing for you, just come pick them up, you bring them back, and we're out of it. Saves them a lot of money, costs them a little energy, some time on their effort, but it's a lot cheaper for them to get a truck from one of their people and come up and pick up barricades, and there's the city to send a truck out to drop them off. And there's probably other opportunities to save money. I think certainly, when it comes to traffic control, it's cheaper for an organization if they put a few people out with one of our traffic people to supervise them than it is to hire five or six of our traffic control people on time and a half. So have we looked at opportunities for people to save themselves money that we shouldn't have to charge them for if they're willing to do some of the work for us?
I believe with regard to the barricades, that the normal practice has been that the organizer would go and pick up the barricades and return them to the, I guess, the closest yard where they can pick them up. It's only on special occasions where your council motions say that the department will deliver them and pick them up.
Yeah, and I've been as guilty as anybody doing that because it's the standard policy. We do that, and I think we should cut that out and put that in the policy and say, let them come pick them up, but also give them other opportunities. If they find ways to cut their own costs, God bless them, and some of these organizations have a lot of people that have been more than willing to help our guys direct traffic as long as we're supervised, and we have the indemnity already from them, so why not let them do those kind of things? If they can cut their costs, then we should encourage that and not charge them, you know. So those are the things I'd like to see if you're going to have, if we're going to postpone this anymore. I hope it's not too long, Mr. Chairman, but.
The problem I have with this report is it assumes that cutting the budget for special events is a positive thing for the city. I have quite an opposite view, that special events are contributive to the city. In fact, I think they are either revenue-neutral or revenue-generating for the city. And there is no analysis here to tell me whether or not these events, in fact, are stimulating revenue or depleting revenue from the city. For example, there is no analysis provided relative to the Academy Awards as to whether or not we are generating revenue as a result of increased or reducing the vacancy rates at the local hotels. There is no analysis as to whether we are stimulating media activity that is resulting from sales tax revenue in a variety of economic spheres coming in from the city relative to an event like El Grito celebration, when 20,000 people go to downtown. We know that the Academy Awards is not just, you know, the tourists who come in are not just coming from the city of Los Angeles. They're coming from Beverly Hills, they're coming from Orange County, they're coming from all over the United States to get a glimpse of movie stars. Well, they're bringing their wallets with them. There's no analysis as to whether or not there are different categories of special events, those of which stimulate economic benefit to the city's general fund. And so this is, this is one of the weakest analyses I've ever seen for, for this kind of recommendation. To simply cut in half the budget for special events may have a deteriorating effect on our general fund. And nobody's ever thought of that possibility. And I, at least I don't see it in this report. Look at some of these events we're talking about having. Having meaning H-A-L-F, H-A-L-V-E-I-N-G. The Latin Grammy Awards, the Grammy Awards. You think that's generating some economic stimulus in our community? And for my money, if we're having a farmers' market and they're professionals, meaning profit-making entities, they're probably collecting sales tax revenue. And that sales tax revenue goes back to the city. So are we being penny wise and pound foolish by trying to cut this budget measly? What's the, what's the total amount that we're proposing saving here? A million bucks?
2.5 million.
2.5 million out of 5 million out of a total budget of how much? And these activities, has there been any, any analysis whatsoever on all these special events activities in terms of the revenue they generate for the city? Do you think it's more than 5 million? I do. I absolutely do.
Perhaps, I think part of what.
I think the Academy Awards, it's by itself, is worth a million bucks.
Well, and I think that's partly why that's being separated, you know, as we start looking at defining what's a citywide event. That is one of those that we want to take another look at and would not necessarily be part of.
Well, I think the analysis here, the analysis here is weak at best. You should be looking at this from a lot of different perspectives. And yes, I agree that, that we should have policies, specific policies. I believe we should have multiple categories of special events, those that are defined as necessary by virtue of their economic stimulus. That category, anytime the city's going to generate more revenue, you know, short of other policy considerations, I mean, we probably want to do it. There should be those categories on a local level that are, that are good because they provide good community activity in areas that are in need of good community activity, which is just about everywhere. And, and yes, we may want to define some kind of budget for each of the council offices. But to try to lump all of these together without any understanding of the economic impact is, is, is like, you know, shooting ducks in the pond blind. I mean, you might hit one correctly, but you better have a shotgun if you're going to hit them all, if you're going to be accurate. So I don't want a shotgun. I think we need to pinpoint where the issues are. I don't even know what the issue is with $5 million in a city like this, like Los Angeles. What's our annual budget?
You're talking general fund, it's 4.5 billion.
4.5 billion? That's just the general fund. What's the total?
How much are we short?
Excuse me, excuse me. Excuse me, I didn't interrupt you. What is the total package of the city?
If you include special fund.
How much money does the city of Los Angeles handle on an annual basis? How much?
Under council control, 7 billion.
7 billion? We're worried about $5 billion, or $5 million, excuse me, when we're talking about programs that we know at a minimum provide some community benefit? Like I said, this is penny wise and pound foolish. In no way, shape, or form will I support it without a more accurate analysis. I indeed believe we should have, I think the reason that we get hit in the press, the reason we get hit in the public comment period, the reason we get hit by the public perception is because we have failed to explain to people the benefit of a particular event. If we explained it to them, they would say, duh, let's do it. But right now, they're saying, you haven't explained it, so I don't know why I should support it. So yes, do your analysis, but do it correctly. Tell us why we support these events, why we should support these events, why we should support these events, why we shouldn't support these events. But give us, give us some analysis, don't just fall into the public perception trap of assuming spending a dime isn't worth spending a dime.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Is that it?
I could go on.
We know that.
But I will.
Okay, thank you, Richard. We appreciate that very much.
You got the gist of what I was saying.
As long as we're on that subject, and you brought up the budget, Mr. Serrano, how much is ours projected shortfall next year without the state budget?
Upwards of 300 million.
300 million short of balancing our budget next year.
I want to go for it.
So while we got $4 billion.
Sounds like we need to do more special events to generate the revenue to cover that.
If you can show us that that's the case, that's fine.
I would love to see that.
But I think that's what we've asked for, on, like, on the farmers' markets.
I agree with you there.
Let's take a look at what is good and what isn't bad, and on those issues, you've talked about a lot of the projects that are not part of this discussion because we recognize that the Grammys and Emmys generate large amounts of money, and economic analysis has been done by the Hollywood Chamber and others on those. We understand that, and that's why they've been exempted from this policy. So I think there's been a recognition of that very fact that there's an economic value. On some of these, we have to question, is there enough significant economic value? I'm not so sure that's there. But the point is, in, in good days, in good days, we gave this away because we could afford to do it. It was a good thing to do. If you look at the list of cities, many cities don't give away any of this. There are cities that don't do this, okay? Look at the list, there's Philadelphia and Sandy, there's a bunch of them on there, look at the list. Some of them said they have no waivers. They don't waive fees. So it's not extraordinary to say, don't do that. But the point is, is we're talking about a $300 million shortfall today for next year, and if the state California takes more, which we think they will, and all of you who serve in the legislature.
Legislative.
All right.
Just finished, folks.
Know the fact they're going to take more. Our unfunded liabilities next year far exceed our funded liabilities.
Call some of your Republican friends to get them to.
Okay, let me say this, Lynn, you're the greatest, and I know that the policies keep switching as council members' attitudes change. I was led in on a little history of this from others in the CLA's office, how energy moves things around and options are created based on that energy. So please, nothing personal about anything of what you guys have done.
We don't take it personally.
And this business here, Attachment B, thank you for answering those questions, which we'll get a chance to read it, and I'll let other colleagues get to see this as well. It's very helpful, and as everybody was saying, we'd obviously like, on this one here, the breakdown as best we can of what these events are, so we get a clearer picture of ourselves. When I look at Mr. Alecon's area, you're CD7, yes?
I want the Academy Award.
See that, CD7? You're 67,000, okay, altogether. Old Rosendale over here in the 11th is 663, so we'd like to know the breakdowns.
663.
Yeah, take a peek at that. So the numbers are what they are, and God knows how we got them together and what we did and so on, but with the breakdown of that, that'll be extremely helpful. And this is a good, robust discussion, and colleagues will like to continue this item for further consideration. So moved, second. We'll, we'll come back with this again at another time.
Wait, how much is the?
It's all in there. Been moved in second.
CD12.
Continue it.
Giving away too much money, I'm going to stop.
And we'll get back, we will, we will hold the next one in September.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
And I've asked my colleagues to have more questions that they might want to submit that could help flesh things out so we have a more robust set of information.
More robust.
Before.
Wait a minute, I just looked at this chart, and $100,000 would be an increase in my district.
There you go. I know. So you should have looked at it before you.
We're looking out for you.
I was trying to help you, Richard, but you blew it.
He went from 67,000 to 100, and he was, okay, thank you so much, appreciate it. Okay, oh yeah, before we go back to the other items, could you redo the ones on consent so Mr. Alecon can join us on those consent issues?
The items on consent are items 2, 3, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, and 12.
I agree.
Okay, so it's unanimous on those consent. Thank you. And we just also did, of course, item 1, Valerie Short came in, and we moved her forward, and now we're going to item number 5.
Item number 5, Board a Public Works Report Relative to Authorizing the Bureau of Sanitation to Take Control of Fire Station 87 at 10241 North Balboa Boulevard and Create a Solvents, Automotives, Flammables, and Electronics Collection Center at Said Site and Related Matters.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Neil Guglielmo of the Bureau of Sanitation, so we have a recycling division. What you have before you is a response to council action in the mid-year report prepared by the CAO and the CLA. We are reporting back with regards to taking over the old Fire Station 87 property, which is located at 10241 North Balboa Boulevard for the purposes of construction of a solvents, automotives, flammables, and electronics safe collection center. automotives, flammables, and electronics safe collection center. The safe collection centers are those facilities we have that complement our mobile collection events for collecting household hazardous waste, paints, solvents, computers, TVs, other items which should not go in the trash, should be properly disposed of and/or recycled through a collection process. We have six safe collection centers currently in the city of Los Angeles, serving our residents as well as small businesses in accordance with state and local laws. So we do recommend your approval to transfer the property from the, well, the old Fire Station 87 property to the Bureau of Sanitation for this purpose. Recommendation number 3, which would request city council mayor instruction to the Los Angeles Fire Department to remove the underground storage tank, is no longer necessary, as we have discovered, working with Bureau of Engineering and General Services Department, the underground storage tank has already been removed and mitigated. Soil has been mitigated. So recommendation number 3 would no longer be necessary. And we are here to answer any questions.
I'm going to defer to Mr. Smith at this point.
Well, I'm very pleased to see this come forward. First of all, it was an old fire station, it has little value. It's an odd configured lot that just happens to work very well for what you want to put there, and then safe center. It's a long, skinny little building that has very little circulation, but you could make it a perfect circulation because the driveway would work very well. So this is really a perfect use. Under the city policy, we always look to city services and uses first before we surplus the property. The budget committee removed it from the surplus list last year, so it's not surplus property at this point. And I think we need to go forward with it. I'm glad that number 3 has been taken care of. I understand the mayor's office wants to make a recommendation. If they want to come forward, I'll, we can discuss it, or not, whatever you choose. But I think this is a perfect need for the city of LA. We don't have a West Valley collection point, we only have an East Valley. Now, that's services about, what do we have, 800,000 people in East Valley, we have another 800,000 in the West Valley that have no place to take their e-waste, u-waste, hazardous waste. And this would be a perfect use for the valley and continue our program to roll out throughout the city, our hazardous material collection program. So I would urge the committee's support.
So that, 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 two quick questions. How much will it cost to construct the safe center?
The safe center construction, the Bureau of Sanitation has allocated 1.25 million. That would include the demolition of the existing structure, the mitigation of the asbestos and lead paint from the old fire station, which is built in the 50s, as well as the construction of the safe center. We also have $200,000 received through a competitive grant with the state. It's the Household Hazardous Waste Opportunity Grant to finance the acquisition of the chemical storage lockers that we use in our safe collection centers, as well as other equipment for the safe center.
Great, thank you.
Our money is coming from where?
We have funding from the Solid Waste Resources Bond for the demolition and construction at the facility. We also have a $200,000 state grant, Household Hazardous Waste Opportunity Grant.
So, so this is consistent with, with existing pools of money?
Correct, yes.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a motion to move forward. Second, okay, unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Takes us to item number 8.
Number 8?
Number 8.
Item number 8.
Item number 8, motion Perry Parks relative to naming the intersection at 50th Street and Hooper Street. Dr. Vincent Hill, the first square.
We have a speaker's card on this.
Bureau of.
Item number 8.
Sir, your dad from the Bureau of Engineering, I talked to the constituent that filled out the spirit card. She already received help from Council District 9, I believe, so she does not need to speak on this item.
So.
Yeah, it's, okay. Move forward.
No desire to speak on it?
I think it was just a question on the name change. That's it, nothing.
Okay.
Everybody's good?
Everybody's good? Everybody's good? Thank you so much for coming here and listening to our little theater.
Nice to have you.
All right, it's been moved in second, unanimously approved on item number 8. Okay, is that it?
That is the entire agenda.
All right, anybody else want to speak about anything else? Meeting is adjourned. Have a great night.